Good afternoon and welcome to the West Burlington City Council Candidate Forum, conducted by the Greater Burlington Partnership Government Relations Committee. My name is Michelle Niehaus, and I will be your moderator for this afternoon. In the interest of time and fairness to the other candidates, I am going to ask each candidate to observe Stevens signals and stop your response when time is up. There's Stevens. The forum will consist of rounds of questions, to which each candidate will have up to two minutes to respond. A decision was made by the Government Relations Committee to have candidates answer the questions impromptu. In other words, they have not seen the questions in advance. Questions from the audience or online will be reviewed to ask, if time permits. Candidates are seated in alphabetical order. To my right, we have Andy Crowner, and to my left, we have Therese Lees. Candidate Ringo Covert was not available to join us this afternoon, but he did provide a statement.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ringo Covert. I will not be attending the forum this afternoon, but I wanted to provide a little information about myself. As many of you know, I recently retired from working as a police officer for the city of West Burlington. I am happy to be a candidate for one of the West Burlington City Council positions. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact me through any of the social media outlets. This is a very good field of candidates, and each of the candidates have always worked for the best interests for the citizens of West Burlington. Please exercise your right to vote this November. Every vote counts. Thank you for your support.
Candidate Kathy Newberry also was not available to join us this afternoon, but she also provided a statement.
My name is Kathy Newberry, and I wanted to extend my sincere apologies for not being able to make it tonight. As a dedicated nurse, my schedule often requires me to work late hours, which unfortunately conflicts with the event's timing. I want to take this opportunity to express my deep commitment to our community. During my first term as a council member, I have strived to make a positive impact, working tirelessly to address key issues. Economic growth and public safety have always been my top priorities. I believe that fostering economic development creates opportunities for our residents and makes our community more vibrant. Simultaneously, ensuring public safety is crucial for the well-being of our citizens. I'm also proud to share that I have dedicated a significant amount of time to furthering my knowledge and expertise in governance and leadership. My involvement in the League of Cities has provided me with valuable insights and practical skills that I believe will contribute to the continued success of our community. Once again, I apologize for not being able to attend the event, and I hope to have the opportunity to discuss these vital issues and my vision for our community with you in the near future.
Okay, let's start by having each of you introduce yourself and share why you are running for a seat on the council. Andy, we'll go ahead and start with you.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Andy Crowner. I'm running for reelection to the West Burlington City Council. I would appreciate your vote. Thank you to the Greater Burlington Partnership for creating this forum, and thank you to those that are watching at home and the one citizen we have here in the audience. I think it's important to be informed, so I hope there's quite a few watching and listening to candidates and what we're running for. I grew up in West Burlington on Spring Street. I graduated from West Burlington High School, as did my sister Amy Burkhart and my parents, Rod and Sheila Crowner. I now live on Lefler Street with my lovely wife Julia and our two kids, Tegan and Ariana, who both go to West Burlington. I work in West Burlington as a Realtor for RE/MAX on Broadway. I'm running again because of my family. We were taught to serve others. My father was on council for 20 years. My grandfather was on the school board when they built the high school. I served the last four years on city council and the four years before that on the school board. I have more that I would like to accomplish, and I hope you'll vote to reelect me on November 7th.
Good afternoon, and thank you again for having this debate, but apparently it won't be much of a debate between Andy and I. My name is Therese Lees, and I was born in 1953 at St. Francis Hospital on Division Street and came home to the house on West Air Drive, and I still live in that vicinity. I've lived here all seven decades of my life. I have completed my eighth term of councilperson for the city of West Burlington. Years, years, years ago, I started to run for council because the city was mandating sidewalks in subdivisions that had no sidewalks when the divisions were built. And so with that, we have developed a sidewalk program, and we also will construct sidewalks anytime we do a new street construction. I am a 1971 graduate at West Burlington Arnold High School, and I graduated from the ADN program from SCC. I retired from GRMC after 45 years as a pediatric nurse. I'm a residential homeowner. I run and operate the West Burlington Mini Storage. Both of my sons have graduated from West Burlington. My oldest son took the biomed tech at SCC, and now he's currently working with anesthesia machines out in SCC.
We've got the...
Ooh, I got stopped. Sorry.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and get into the questions, and Therese, we'll start with you. How engaged are you in the city's housing issues and discussions, and what are some strategies you might suggest to improve housing conditions and affordability in the community?
Well, we just completed the housing survey, and that was an interesting synopsis of reading that. We have Greg Monziger, our city administrator, has been in contact with a person who developed senior housing up in Muscatine. And he has brought this guy to our community, and hopefully in 2024, he will develop a 55-plus housing. It will go on the east side behind American Inn, and I think that's about a 50-unit thing. So that way, it'll open up some housing for young couples to come to our community with their children to increase our West Burlington school population. We are also working with Penn Landing. It's down on Pennington Street, and we'll be working with the people that own that, and Ryan Nagraki, I believe, is the one that's going to start the constructions there. We need younger people in our community. The majority of our group is like, hmm, older. And we like our community. We don't really want to leave, but opening up this opportunity for the 55-plus housing keeps you here in the community, and then you can sell your house for future development with single-family residents and kids.
Oh, Andy, same question.
Okay. Housing issues in my life and my career, that's what I deal with on a second-to-second basis as a Realtor. When it comes to housing, there are really three issues: availability, price, and acceptable living conditions. As a city, we've set a goal to build 200 new doors and rehabilitate 100 properties over the next 10 years. To help upgrade our current housing stock, we have passed our first-ever residential tax abatement program, which will give us tax relief to homeowners who significantly upgrade their property. Close to 50 high-end apartments are about to open up near Target, and then, as Therese mentioned, the 50-unit senior housing facility there next to American Inn next year. We now need to shift our focus to single-family housing and work with developers, employers, and other partnerships to get the homes built. One key to this is the new Housing Commission, which is being run by the partnership, which I hope to be a part of and have a seat on that board. The other key is continuing to create a safe and well-maintained home with amenities and low taxes. Thank you.
Okay. Next question. Tax increment financing has been aggressively utilized in West Burlington. In your opinion, what are you willing to use TIF for, and what are you unwilling to use TIF for?
Yeah, so TIF, I think, is one tool, one lever we can pull when we're talking development, whether it be business or housing. It allows us to use future tax revenues that would be created to help somebody build and build in our city. I think we've done a good job over the past 20 years utilizing that in a lot of projects, and I would continue to utilize it more. I think anytime somebody comes to us and wants to build in West Burlington, I think we need to look if that makes sense for them, or a tax abatement makes sense. We live in a day and age where our competitors, other cities across the state and across the country, are willing to do so and give those incentives, and so we need to use that. It's just one lever to pull, and we have a lot of others, but it is very important. And anything we can do to bring that, bring more jobs to our community, bring more housing is something we really need.
Thank you. Therese?
Well, I can only echo what Andy has said. We started using TIF way back, and we cleaned up the blighted areas down on Levine's Trailer Court. It was such a mess down there that we used the TIF program there and cleaned that up and put in new housing on Meadow Street, Cottage Grove, and Prairie Street. And then we also developed the West Highland subdivision with the TIF projects. And it's just a tool, as he said, for communities our size, because we just don't have that amount of money, and we can turn it around and put in new infrastructure that will be needed for the new developments that we have.
Okay. The cities of Burlington and West Burlington made investments years ago into the Flint Ridge Business Park in the form of public streets and infrastructure. Those available sites are now nearly all taken with businesses that employ over 700 area residents and pay significant property taxes. Grow Greater Burlington owns 36 acres in West Burlington on North Gear Avenue for a future West Burlington industrial park. What is your vision relative to such a development?
Well, I'm always anxious to develop some more industry. That property is going to take a lot of investment, since it was the old Raiders, I understand, that they have buried a lot of concrete pillings and stuff way down deep, and I'm afraid that might be interfering with our infrastructure. So we'll have to look at that very closely. I'm all for ponying up on the city's part to see what we can do to get it renovated and get it moving.
Andy?
My turn. I think if you look at Flint Ridge, I would love to have that on North Gear, and that starts with us and communicating with the Chamber and the partnership that own the land, and then us also making smart decisions for our taxpayers. I know we looked at a grant there about a year ago that, in the end, would have cost our taxpayers quite a bit of money, and I'm glad we did not get involved in that. But in the end, we need to find a way to all come together, put in the infrastructure that's needed, water and sewer. We need to clean up the roadway that goes out towards North Gear. That's an area that kind of jogs there, right next to Dearie Brothers. I know I've had conversations with developers out that way. The archway heading that direction, it needs cleaned up, and so that's on our dime and something we need to look at. We do own some property right there in that corner to fix that up. The rest of the property, it really comes down to a road for us and what we need to get done and get the road that goes by Southeast Iowa Regional Planning and by Raiders up to the rest of the ground. I hope if we fast-forward five to 10 years, that area is greened up and has several businesses in it. That would be fantastic, and I hope we all get in a room and talk about that.
Okay. The Iowa Army ammunition plant is undergoing a major modernization and expansion over the next few years, with the project investing anywhere from $1.5 to $2 billion. What do you see as the city council's role in supporting this project?
Number one, we've got to be in the room that starts later this week, so we can hear all the problems. I've had several conversations, whether it be with the school superintendent, the previous director out of the plant, about what they see coming, but I think we need a little more info to know exactly. And so we have several major hurdles coming our way when it comes to housing. Number one, we have some roadwork we're planning out that way, and hopefully we can get some funds that are kind of meant for those kind of developments around plants like that. So hopefully, we can get something like that rolling. After that, it's going to take a toll on absolutely every part of our community. Healthcare, if we're going to add that many people over the next couple of years, we're going to have a big toll on our healthcare system. I don't think there's a part of our town it won't touch. Now, this is also an opportunity. So I think we need to find ways to show these people how great Burlington and West Burlington and Southeast Iowa is, and show them they want to stay here and live here, and it's great to have that development here, so let's find a way to turn it into a positive.
Well, as Andy said, there are a lot of hurdles, but, you know, we did that when the fertilizer plant developed down south of us, and we were able to accommodate a lot of those people. And some of those people have stayed on with us. Healthcare will probably be a big issue, as it is now that it's hard. A lot of nurses and doctors have retired, and finding replacements, not that I'm irreplaceable, but finding replacements for the healthcare industry is almost next to none. I know the hospital is trying to recruit more doctors and more nurses, but, you know, the pay can be pretty sticky when you've got traveling nurses that make more money than what we make out here. Hopefully, we can all come together as a community, as a county, to accommodate what's coming, and hopefully, we know more as this meeting partakes on Thursday.
Burlington and West Burlington are sister cities. How do you envision greater collaboration between the Burlington and West Burlington communities, including and beyond city government agreements?
Well, you know, it's taken a long time to knock that fence down from back in the '70s, and I think we've pretty much done that. We've got quite a few 28E agreements with Burlington, and with the mandates, with the state, and our property taxes, we're going to find that we're going to have more cooperation between public works, fire, police, things of that nature, because we're just next door. And I don't have a problem working with any of the people from Burlington. I think we rely on them, and they rely on us, and we're just sisterly love.
Okay. Andy?
Therese and I, many times, have said the words "separate but together," and I think that's really the meaning. We need to maintain our independence and be West Burlington and do all the things that West Burlington wants to do, while at the same time, know that we benefit greatly from being right next door to Burlington and the populace and everything that Burlington brings to us. There's no other 3,000-person town just sitting out in the middle without a Burlington next to it that has an SCC and a Great River Hospital and all the amenities that we get to enjoy in West Burlington. So we need to know we are part of a region. You know, I myself, I've served on several things that benefit both parties on the Convention and Tourism Bureau right now. I've sat on the new Fire Station Committee for Fire Station 3 that's going to vote right now. All these things are important to the people I sell houses to every day, to my neighbors who also have family in Burlington. So I don't want to lose West Burlington in our field, in our school district, and all the things that make us great, but we also need to realize all the benefits we get from Burlington and continue to work with them.
Okay. Most candidates for local office have a pet project or issue of primary interest that compel them to run for office. What's yours?
My primary interest is to make West Burlington the absolute best small town I can make it. That doesn't mean grow it into a big town. That means keep it small, but make it the best that we absolutely can. I do have a few pet projects that I've kind of had to take over. My dad, obviously, started West Burlington 4th of July 20 years ago, and it's an honor of mine to take that over and run with it, get a lot of volunteers, including Therese, that make that event happen. So that is a little pet project, and I hope to continue it. Last year, we started the West Burlington Business of the Year. I would like to continue to do that. One of our goals is to maintain our businesses and bring in more business over the next 10 years, and I see that as one way we can do that. I hope in the next four years to start a couple of other programs, including ways that we can work with SCC to welcome students that are moving into the dorms, teach them about West Burlington, the services that we have. I'd like to add an additional city event in the fall, sometime in late September in West Burlington. And I'd also like to find a way to collaborate better with our schools, to be able to bring kids in and teach them about our police force, our fire department, our public works. I see in the future, we're going to have trouble recruiting those positions, and so I think we need to find a way to make sure our West Burlington kids know those options are here in West Burlington.
Well, for the last probably eight years, I've been pushing for a sidewalk from Gear Avenue to West Burlington Avenue to hook up with ABB. I see a lot of people walking in the grassy area or even on the right-of-way gravel area. I just don't think it's safe. We have a lot of kids coming from SCC to Walmart or even down to Perkins and stuff of that nature, and I see employees that are dressed up in certain clothes for Wendy's and McDonald's taking the same route. And I'd like to make it safer for them to walk from West Burlington Avenue out to Gear. With the trail coming in, that would be a great hookup if we could get that hooked in, and make it safer for our people. And along with Andy, I think probably we need something in September, you know, Oktoberfest or some fun thing like that, just to keep people aware of the fact that we're still here and we're celebrating. Sometimes, when the 4th of July runs in the middle of the week, the participation's just a little bit lower than what it would be if it'd be on a Friday or a Monday, and we'd just like to keep the home lights burning.
What role should local government play to create an environment that would grow the city's population?
Well, I think we should be actively involved with the Chamber and with the state in developing more tax abatements, providing tax abatements. A lot of people didn't know there were, like, residential tax abatements that we've had out for several years, and I know a few people that have taken an interest in that tax abatement to build new houses or even to remodel theirs. I just think if we just try to push ourselves out there to get more cooperation amongst the people, volunteerism, I'd like to see a lot of people more volunteer for organizations and the park board and things of that nature, that we can keep moving along.
Okay. Any questions?
I was down here in this room a couple days ago, talking to the Greater Burlington Leadership Committee, and this was basically the same question the entire time. And I always like to say it's a three-sided problem. We need good, high-paying jobs. We need residents qualified to fill those positions, and we need good, adequate housing for those people's families. And if you're missing any of those, none of it works. So if you've got the person and the job, and you don't have a house for them, that's what we're getting letters for right now, saying, hey, we don't have this housing. Help us out. And vice versa, if you've got the person and the house, but you don't have a job for them, well, they're not coming here. So we really have to work on all three of those aspects at the same time. So as your local government, we need to work with the Chamber, obviously, SCC, the hospital, and other large partnerships in the area. We can't build houses, but we need to be involved in the process of finding land to develop and building the infrastructure, and sometimes finding incentives and state grants that can help people build. And that's how you see some of these projects getting done, like the apartments over at Target is, through state grants and some involvement through us. So the other thing, we need to celebrate our community. We need to continue to talk about our school district and how great it is, and the jobs that we do have here, and how we love living here. And we get a lot of people in for tournaments, like the soccer tournament last week. We just need to continue to show them and let our city shine, and bring them in, and provide those three things.
One of the most difficult decisions you might have to make as a city councillor will be budgetary, which matters to you more, protecting services or cutting taxes, and why?
Well, I'm a low-tax guy. I do not want to raise our taxes very high, and in West Burlington, our taxes have been pretty steady for the last 22-ish years. So those that came before me, including Therese, have done a great job at that, and I intend to keep those low as well. On the other side, our citizens need certain things. We need water, sewer, we need strong police force, strong fire department, great public works, roads, and then we have our wants, and we want our pool, and we want our parks, and we want our trails and things like that. And so we need to find a way to get the necessities paid through our general taxes and keep those low, which we've been doing. And the other aspect is planning out our amenities and going out and finding additional state funds and grants and partnering with other people to get those paid for. The trail, we've talked about, going over Gear, which will break ground in the spring. It's a little over a million-dollar project, but almost $900,000 of that-ish is state grant-funded, so our cost to our actual citizens is very low for that. So we just need to continue to pay for the necessities and find grants for the things that we want.
Well, doing the budget for that many years, I always ask my department heads, is it a want or a need? Because I don't, I don't, there's a high percentage of single-income families in West Burlington that are just, sometimes they're barely skimping by, and a lot of them are single women. And I want to maintain what we have, and I don't want to increase the tax rate. So we need to go out and increase our tax base by doing all of this other stuff, bringing in industry and setting up houses and things of that nature. And like Andy referred to, we were kind of in a stalemate after COVID. Several years after COVID, we were just stagnant. And since we brought Greg back as our city administrator, he's been able to find grants and money available to get us kick-started into our pollinator, our pollinator trees, and the grant he got for the trail, and he's working on some other projects, and I think that makes a big difference. But public safety comes first, and we only, well, I'm good.
Okay. All right. In your opinion, what is the biggest issue facing the city of West Burlington, and what would you like to see the council's response to the need, or see as the council's response to the need?
Well, I'm a big Dave Ramsey fellow, and I wish I would have found him like 40-some years ago. We always try to put three to six months of savings aside for emergencies. Well, the city has the same issue, but our emergencies are a whole lot bigger than my plumbing at home. We're going to be dealing with our force main, our 24-inch force main going down Gear. We've had a few little leaks out of that thingy, and it's over, it's probably coming to its life of 20 years, and we need to look at that force main, because that's, you won't flush a toilet if that goes. So we have a company coming in to put in a couple of air release valves, and hopefully this will take care of it or help us limp along until we are able to either put in another force main or see what we can do to repair this one. I see that as a big problem for our infrastructure.
Yeah. Four years ago, I would have answered this by, we are not planning ahead. Now, we went back and kind of passed real goals for the next 10 years. We've put together a capital improvement plan. We've stopped using debt for every purchase just in the past couple of years. Instead of going out and getting a loan and paying interest for a new fire truck and a new street sweeper, we've saved up in used funds and bought those with cash. So I think if we continue to do that, that'll help. As Therese mentioned, I think our biggest issue is major infrastructure projects. At the same time, as everybody else and everybody at home, giant inflation is happening, and all of our costs are going up. And then the additional item we have is the state is starting to really constrain our ability to raise revenue. So we have all three of those things at the same time, so balancing that's going to be a problem. So the answer to that is, we need slow and steady growth, both residential and commercial. We need to go out and find ways to continually grow, and that's really what the new state tax system is set up to do, to reward those cities that have that growth. And if you're kind of stagnant, or if you're growing by leaps and bounds, it really kind of goes against the rules they've set. So in order to cover that inflation, we've got to find a way to continually add housing and businesses.
As you look 10 years down the road, how might West Burlington be similar to today, and how might it be different?
I think it'll probably be very similar. At least the 40-some years of my life, there's been a lot of good things done, but it's still the great, same-small town. It's still led by our school district, and the want of people to be there around their family and friends and attend that school, I think, is really what, when you think about West Burlington, what it comes down to. My hope is that we will continue to develop the west side, that the mall area will see some major development that, as you cross over Gear, and we'll find some way to safely get across there, that we'll continue to develop more housing that direction, housing closer over to Dearie Brothers. And then, I think, as I mentioned earlier, rehabbing our older housing stock is a pretty big deal, and that's, the demand is there, and housing, I see it every day, but it's still pretty expensive right now. But programs like our tax abatement program will help that in the future and make it less costly to do so. But I think it'll still have the same great, small town with hopefully some new development, especially to the west.
Well, as the old saying is, go west, young man, go west. And we have a lot of cornfield to the west of us. We've initiated, we're going through our comp plan, and with that in place, it'll help us plan that area better for either industrial or residential growth. We also have, with Southeast Iowa Regional Planning and our LMI money set aside, to help the elderly that we have in West Burlington, like, to help put in a new roof, new windows, a new furnace if they need it for the elderly that can't afford it. At least, we know that we'll keep them warm or safe, and I think that's a good program that we have. As Andy alluded to, it's slow, slow growth, but, you know, as long as we keep moving forward, we will be better off, and you just don't lose that hometown feel that we have. I mean, everybody knows everybody in our community, and if they don't know us, we'll know them before long.
Now, we've come to our closing statements, and we'll go ahead and start with Therese.
All right. Well, a big thank you for your vote of support in the last eight elections, and I hope you consider me a worthy candidate again. and I hope you consider me a worthy candidate again. I have lived in West Burlington since I was born, and I'm committed to our little community. I'm so amazed at how our town's appearance has changed and what has been accomplished these last 32 years. And we're just getting started. There are more projects to do and businesses to attract to West Burlington, and I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and work on it. I love our small-town pride, the famous 4th of July activities, starting with the fire department pancakes, kids' bike races, the patriotic services, and everything in between, ending with our infamous fireworks. I've had the privilege to present a motion to rename Longdale Park to Pat Klein Park for her efforts in getting the park established almost 40 years ago. It was a great tribute to her and her family. I would be honored and humbled to be able to serve a ninth term as councilperson for you. I am safety-oriented and conscientious. I take this job seriously, and I'm committed to make West Burlington a beautiful, vibrant, and safe community. My voting record reflects that. When I vote on an issue, it benefits the city of West Burlington, which in turn benefits you and me. If you're happy with the city's services, streets, water, fire, police, and amenities, and are proud to say you are a West Burlingtonian like me, then I'm your vote.
Thanks, Therese, for being here, number one. I feel this is very important to be at, very important to be engaged. And I think that's where I want to end things with my closing statement. I've served the last four years on city council and the four years before that on school board, with two of those as president of the school board. I've served the last four years on the Greater Burlington Convention Visitors Bureau Committee, which oversees the Welcome Center, Visitor Guide, and Grants for Local Events that Bring People to Town. I sit on the Greater Burlington Sports Commission. We apply for grant funds and use those funds to bring sports tournaments to town, like the Giants soccer tournament last weekend. I'm a founding and current board member of the West Burlington High School Alumni Association. We raise funds and give two scholarships to West Burlington High School seniors every year. I sit on a United Way allocations committee. I have coached fifth and sixth-grade basketball for West Burlington, and I volunteer several times a year in the classroom to help prepare West Burlington High School juniors to enter the workforce by doing mock interviews. That's what I'll be doing tomorrow. Finally, I love West Burlington. I want to continue to serve. I've got a lot of things I'd still like to accomplish, and I hope on November 7th, you'll give me your vote.
Okay. Well, that is all the questions we have here today. I would like to thank both of you for your interest in serving the West Burlington community. Public service can often be a thankless job, but we need dedicated individuals to serve. I want to thank the Greater Burlington Partnership and its Government Relations Committee for hosting this event, and thank those in the audience here and those who have been watching and/or listening online for your interest in the city council election. Please vote for the candidates of your choice in the city of West Burlington on Tuesday, November 7th.